First item agenda on the agenda is property purchased by College of Charleston, request to approve.
Can I say what we're...
Is this what... These are two properties downtown on... One of them's on Bull... Excuse me, one of them's on Cummings Street and the other one's on 99 St. Philip Street. One of them's got an old dorm on it and the other one, I believe, is the...
Condos.
Or old condos and the other one is, I believe, the old Y.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we don't own the property, they buy it from them?
We don't own the property. They're gonna... They're gonna sell it, but it's gonna come off the tax roll.
That's good, that's good.
Recommendation.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Moody and seconded by Ms. Honeycutt. Any discussion?
Oh, Lonnie.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you. Item two, executive session. Receipt of legal advice for Palmetto Commerce Interchange eminent domain litigation and receipt of legal advice, Charlotte's Pearl LLC et al. versus Charleston County. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Boykin and Ms. Honeycutt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
We're back from executive session.
Where no votes were taken, no decisions were made. Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, as regards to item 2A, I move to authorize the county attorney to resolve the Palmetto Commerce Interchange eminent domain litigation pursuant to the amount discussed in executive session.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Three nays.
For my sole purpose, Mr. Chairman, is I don't believe in eminent domain irrespective, sir. That's my sole purpose of vote against it. I do not believe in eminent domain.
All right, sir. Number 2B.
Mr. Chair, I move to direct staff to draft a Zeldar text amendment to clarify the allowable uses on Deweese Island and present such text amendment to Deweese Island property owners followed by the Charleston County Planning Commission for recommendation.
Mr. Boykin seconded by Mr. Moody. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm changing my vote on 2A to nay. I intended that to be so.
Okay.
Okay. Now we have a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
First one, Azalea Phase Two Dominion Energy easement.
Given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy of South Carolina on a portion of county property located at Leeds Avenue and Headquarters Road and known as Azalea Complex Two.
Thank you. We have no one here to speak on this issue. The next one is Azalea Fuel Site Dominion Energy Easement.
Notice hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy of South Carolina Incorporated on a portion of county property located at Leeds Avenue and Headquarters Road and known as Azalea Fuel Site.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you. No one signed up for this one. Next one, transfer of City of Charleston election authority to the Board of Voter Registration.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy of South Carolina Incorporated on a portion of county property located at Leeds Avenue and Headquarters Road and known as Azalea Fuel Site.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you. No one signed up for this one. Next one, transfer of City of Charleston election authority to the Board of Voter Registration.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy of South Carolina Incorporated on a portion of county property located at Leeds Avenue and Headquarters Road and known as Azalea Fuel Site.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
We're back from executive session. Where no votes were taken, no decisions were made. Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, as regards to item 2A, I move to authorize the county attorney to resolve the Palmetto Commerce Interchange eminent domain litigation pursuant to the amount discussed in executive session.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. Three nays. Okay.
For my sole purpose, Mr. Chairman, is I don't believe in eminent domain irrespective, sir.
Pardon?
That's my sole purpose of vote against it. I do not believe in eminent domain.
All right, sir. Number 2B.
Mr. Chair, I move to direct staff to draft a Zeldar text amendment to clarify the allowable uses on Deweze Island and present such text amendment to Deweze Island property owners followed by the Charleston County Planning Commission for recommendation.
Mr. Boykin seconded by Mr. Moody. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm changing my vote on 2A to nay. I intended that to be so.
Okay.
Okay. Now we have a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
First one, Azalea Phase Two Dominion Energy easement.
Given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy of South Carolina on a portion of county property located at Leeds Avenue and Headquarters Road and known as Azalea Complex Two.
Thank you. We have no one here to speak on this issue. The next one is Azalea Fuel Site Dominion Energy Easement.
Notice hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy of South Carolina Incorporated on a portion of county property located at Leeds Avenue and Headquarters Road known as Azalea Fuel Site.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Financial Incentives.
Public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC.
Thank you. No one signed up for this one. Next one, transfer of City of Charleston election authority to the Board of Voter Registration.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance approving and accepting the complete transfer of authority to conduct municipal elections for the City of Charleston to the Board of Elections and Voter Registration of Charleston County.
We have one speaker for this one.
Anthony Bryant.
I support this 110%. I remember in the 90s, a couple of close elections that took place. Some people might have been on county city council, might have been on city council if this was in the hand of the county. This was supposed to be done many years ago. I mean, the city of Charleston, all the municipalities shouldn't be running elections at all, frankly. And they should all be ran through the county to ensure that, you know, partisanship doesn't raise its ugly head. And, you know, you know, boxes come in 11 o'clock at night. And I remember a dear friend of mine had two runoffs downtown. And it was strange. Until the county kind of intervened in this process, he wouldn't have been a city council member. So I definitely would want to see this happening throughout the whole county, not the whole state. It's a duplication of service. It's a waste of taxpayers' money. And based upon what's going on right now with inflation, we need all the money we can get.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Next one is F-. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Next one is FY25 County Budget.
As required by Section 6-1-80 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM in council chambers on the operating budget ordinances for fiscal year 2025.
We have one person, Anthony Bryant.
This is the most important, important part of the meeting's over when this is done. Once you do, the money is over. Far as I can say, I gotta come back here no more. What I think we should have is a glossary because I'm not really clear on what transportation sales tax one means or two mean, special revenue funds, I don't know what that means, enterprise, I don't know what that means, general services fund, I don't know what that means. I know what debt service means, general fund means. And the question then becomes me, I don't know what that means. It's unclear. And I think that if you got an unclear program and activity, it could be unjust, it could be unjust, you know. So from being a former board member involved in budgets of the past 10 years, I really just enjoy coming to this meeting. The other ones I always like coming to. But this one I enjoy because we gonna talk about bread, you know, and everybody need that. So I think that the school board will be coming to you at some point in terms of a Tiff District for a billionaire, right? So you gonna take money off the tax rolls at some point. He gonna ask you that question. Now, the mayor of the City of Charleston, I respect the gentleman, he only gives you a minute to speak. Now, how can you ask all this stuff the City of Charleston asks you for and the mayor only give you a minute to speak? We hope this council gives us two to three minutes on this mayor to ensure that he operating in good faith with our money.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Fiscal year 25 special purposes, excuse me, special purpose districts budgets.
Yes, sir. As required by Section 6-1-80 Code of Laws of South Carolina 1976 as amended, notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM on the operating budget ordinances for fiscal year 2025 for Charleston County Park and Recreation, Cooper River Parks and Playgrounds, North Charleston District, St. Andrews Parks and Playgrounds, St. John's Fire District, and St. Paul's Fire District.
Thank you. Anyone here?
We have Anthony Bryant.
This is your natural, this is your natural piece here. This is what you do. And this budget should be priority for y'all. Okay? So these folks here ain't the city. They ain't asking you for no money. They ain't asking you for no Tiff districts. This is your core business. Now, if you can go out a little bit on this and give them some more money, you know, and give them a little bit more bread, you know, put an amendment together, friendly amendment together, maybe to, you know, post some money from other people because we've been hearing the fire district on James Island want a little bit more money, you know. So they want a little bit more bread. So I think that you need to really sit down and, you know, before the fourth reading, whatever you got to do, say, what about our people in the county and incorporated areas that we deal with? Our people. Be a little selfish with them. Give them a little bit more money.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Sales Tax Referendum.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. The public hearing will be regarding an ordinance to levy and impose a one-half of 1% sales tax and use tax subject to a referendum within Charleston County.
We have 24 people signed up. The first person is Janet Bates, and then Diamond Curry and Erin Butner.
Good evening. I'm here today to express my strong support of the transportation sales tax. The projects that my company builds are across our region, and like so many community members, our employees commute from one end of town to the other to get to project sites often in dangerous traffic. The safety and security of our staff and trade partners are of the utmost importance. Extending the Mark Clark enhances safety by reducing accidents and travel time. Well-maintained roads and bridges contribute to a safer environment for everyone, including our workers who commute daily. And reduced travel time means more hours spent on actual work, leading to better project outcomes. The transportation sales tax ensures that our workforce can move efficiently, contributing to the success of our projects and by extension, the economic success of our region. I ask that you vote yes to the transportation sales tax referendum language. Thank you for your commitment to our community's future.
Thank you.
Diamond Curry, Erin Butner, Brian Dareberry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of county council. My name is Diamond Curry, and I'm here on a representative capacity on behalf of the Charleston Metro Chamber of Commerce located at 4922 O'Hare Avenue in North Charleston, ZIP Code 29405. This month, two of our policy center committees voted unanimously to support the list of projects proposed in the referendum draft language for the transportation sales tax. Our membership is comprised of professionals that identify not only as business leaders, but mothers, fathers, Little League coaches, volunteers, and residents of the Charleston area. Whether they were born here or relocated here to pursue better for their families, they've decided to make Charleston their home. They, like all residents, deserve quality transportation infrastructure. Charleston County is too great to remain crippled by incomplete interstates and roads. We ask that you vote yes on the referendum language and yes to maintaining the quality of life for everyone, whether they drive, bike, or catch the bus. Thank you.
Erin Butner, Brian Dareberry, Mark Green.
Good evening, Erin Butner. I live in 3261 Beaconsfield Road in Mount Pleasant. I'm here to speak in support of the transportation sales tax referendum. I work for a financial institution. We employ over 100 associates here in the greater Charleston area. The reality of our situation is that without the proper infrastructure for transportation, including but not limited to the development of the Mark Clark extension, we will continue to see unprecedented traffic volumes that will have a negative impact on lives of those in the low country. Here's what I mean. It's a matter of public safety. I've witnessed emergency vehicles get caught up and slowed down in congested traffic areas, especially in the space of Johns Island, James Island area. We're risking lives of those who need help by voting against this referendum. It's a matter of small businesses flourishing or imploding. It's become more difficult year after year to hire employees on Johns Island, James Island, and beyond because of the traffic congestion and the high cost of housing. Many small businesses are willing to pay a premium for help. However, there comes a point where it doesn't make fiscal sense. Should the small business relocate to another part of Charleston? Should their service quality deteriorate? Or should they close altogether and not live their American dream? Not having this transportation infrastructure will and is harming small businesses. This one isn't a stretch, but its reality is that there's also a matter of mental health. And so there's, with that, in 2018, the Journal of Public Economics said that there was an increased incident whenever you had high traffic volumes with domestic violence. And that kind of goes into a few different things. I've received a phone call from an associate one night who was sitting on a bridge, a young lady crying. And as she wept, she was crying because, again, she was stuck on a bridge. Two children under the age of five years old. And I'm there talking to her, and we worked out and found a solution for her. But unfortunately, she was going through that mental anguish there. We had another young lady that was recently who had gone through this. She tried, it took her three hours to get out of the, two hours, excuse me, to get out of the greater Charleston area to get to her child's softball tournament. So with that being said, I'd say stopping the growth is not an option. What we want to do is we want to manage the growth with prudence and with wisdom. And the passage of this referendum is crucial for the communities in our region. And I'm asking you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Brian Dareberry, Mark Green, Barry Whalen.
Good evening. I'm Brian Dareberry at 4922 O'Hare Avenue, North Charleston. I'm here tonight as president and CEO of the Charleston Metro Chamber of Commerce, sharing our full support for the transportation sales tax referendum. 1,600 businesses and their 165,000 employees comprise our chamber, all of whom daily need a reliable and accessible infrastructure system. They've shared that this issue is one of their top two needs. We're confident that the referendum funds will be used for many critical infrastructure projects. One of the projects includes the completion of the Mark Clark extension, which will greatly improve regional connectivity and alleviate congestion. Investing in mass transit options will provide sustainable transportation choices for our community. The dedicated lanes for bicycle and pedestrians will enhance safety and promote healthier lifestyles. The infrastructure improvements will also strengthen our emergency evacuation capabilities during the annual hurricane season. Our members express their sincere appreciation to the Charleston County Council for making a decision to proceed with extending the transportation sales tax referendum in its specific language. This choice will empower voters to invest in projects that will enhance regional mobility, reduce congestion, and improve connectivity for all of us. Thank you for making this important choice.
Mark Green, Barry Whalen, Scott Barhite.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. I'm a two-year resident of Johns Island, and I am a strong supporter of this tax referendum. I want to address the entire room first. Thank you for this entire community welcoming my family after 26 years of military service. But I'm not here to address you as the former commander of Joint Base Charleston. I'm not here to address you as a veteran advocate. I'm not here to address you as now a new member of the business community. Instead, I'm simply here to address you as the father of a soon-to-be teenage driver. The roads here need work. We all know that. I grew up in Washington, DC. I've seen what happens when traffic goes unchecked, when infrastructure is not invested in with growth. We must do so responsibly. No plan is perfect. We can have disagreements on the particular issues. That's expected. But having no plan and not executing a plan is simply untenable. The road, that that path takes you down, benefits nobody. We have to take action. So again, I'm the father of a soon-to-be teenage driver. These roads are dangerous. They're getting more congested. On my drive over from Johns Island tonight, I was recently reminded of that. We must take action. No action simply is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Barry Whalen, Scott Barhite, Jay Piner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow councilmen. My name is Barry Whalen. I'm the president of HLA Inc., local West Ashley business at 29 Linebuck Drive. I'm here to share my support for the one-half cent sales tax referendum language as is currently proposed. We moved our offices from downtown Charleston 32 years ago to our present location off the Savannah Highway halfway between downtown Charleston and the current dead end of the Mark Clark Expressway. After review of the Mark Clark completion plans in 1992, our company moved our offices to West Ashley. The plans for the total Mark Clark were conceived in 1972, and by 1992, the road was nearing completion to Daniel Island and Mount Pleasant as well as the James Island Expressway portion. Completion of the Mark Clark was a very reasonable assumption since it had been recently extended to Daniel Island and Mount Pleasant. Therefore, West Ashley move was good for our employees. Since that 1992 decision, over the last 32 years, more than 200 of our employees over that time have had their lives compromised by the delays caused by the lack of Mark Clark completion. They have missed time with their families and friends sitting in traffic, which is unfortunate and avoidable. The half-cent sales tax provides an improved quality of life for these families through traffic improvements and the additional community benefits that include more mass transit, like rapid, low country rapid transit and CARTA, dedicated bicycle lanes, safer pedestrian walkways, and the preservation of green spaces and parks. The half-cent sales tax improvements have made a significant positive difference over the past 10 years, and we couldn't imagine how bad things would be without them. Please pass this package as it is written to ensure quality of life for our community and our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Barhite, Jay Piner, Dennis Flachek.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Scott Barhite. I'm senior vice president for government relations for the Charleston Metro Chamber of Commerce. You already know where the Metro Chamber's position is, so I thought I'd make a personal point. I'm one of that 30 or 40% of folks that don't live in Charleston County but work in Charleston County who are going to happily pay our share of the transportation sales tax because these projects are so needed. The other point I wanted to make was, as a resident of Daniel Island, we enjoy the benefits of 526 every single day. We have our bridge. Good people of Johns Island deserve their bridge as well. So it is clear to me personally, and is also as a representative of the chamber, just how important these improvements in all the transportation sales tax projects are, and we urge that you support the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jay Piner, Dennis Flachek, Mary Howard.
Good evening. Thank you for your leadership, council. My name is Jay Piner. I'm the CEO of Wando Builders, a multi-generational family builder and electrical contractor. I also am the board president of the Charleston Home Builders Association and represent those best positioned to address our region's housing crisis. I am fortunate enough to have been born and raised in Charleston. We live in a truly special place, and I want to encourage this council to vote to put the referendum on the November ballot as presented, keeping all the proposed transportation projects together. This referendum presents our region with an opportunity to catch up on improving our infrastructure and is critical to the success of Charleston County. This half-cent sales tax is vital to the future of growth. As a business owner with crews traveling our roads, a father whose children go to school, a wife who is a nurse and works at a local hospital, I feel the pain of how connected our roads truly are. One bad wreck on any one of our major bridges or roadways can have a snowball effect on the rest of the low country. We must have a united approach to address the traffic problems. We are blessed with thriving region, and with this, we have experienced incredible growth over the last few years. To sustain this growth, we need this funding to invest in our roads. Our region needs to enhance the way we connect rooftops, roads, and jobs. If we do, if we don't do it now, we are only going to get further behind, and we're already trying to catch up to the growth that is here now. As a business owner, resident, father, husband, and citizen, I ask Charleston County to do the right thing and let our citizens vote on the ordinance as presented.
Thank you, sir.
Dennis Flachek, Mary Howard, David Stashukitis.
Good evening. Thank you, council. I'm mainly, my name is Dennis Blasky, 1873 Palmetto Drive, Mount Pleasant resident for the past 29 years. And I am also a local architect and have training in regional planning. I want to make four key points mainly to those who need to continue to support this referendum and future vote. My four key points are, first of all, this is a continuation of the proactive steps that this council has already taken in the past. It's not a new thing. A lot of people don't understand that. This is a continuation of an old sales tax for the purposes that are already this council's job and our local government's job, to levy taxes, to designate the projects, to provide the timeline, speaking as a project manager and architect, and to administer the identified projects. This is their job, guys, so just, please just let them do it. Two, the data supports the finding. The national average over the last 25 years has been 22% growth population. Charleston County, we've more than doubled that. We're county growing faster than just about every county in South Carolina, I think all counties but one in South Carolina. So we just simply have the cars, have the people, have the growth coming, whether you like it or not, at the airport, at the port, in our I-26 downtown, in parking spaces all over. The data supports the findings of needing more transportation. Third, the transportation infrastructure, regional planning, supports equity and inclusion. A lot of people don't understand that. I happened to design in 1995 the CARTA Superstop on Rivers Avenue, and that project was about providing people choice freedom. Is that one of your two minutes? Yes?
Mary.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Howard, David Staskunitis, William Hamilton.
Hello. I'm Mary Howard, 2760 Joe Lane on Johns Island. And I've got a concern with this half-cent sale tax. When we voted, we had it on the referendum for the vote a few years ago. It got a negative, and no, we didn't want it. And it was because, this is my personal opinion, that a few years before then, there was something that was on a referendum similar, and not necessarily you representatives, but county council decided they were gonna, what we call bait and switch. And I think that's why the referendum didn't pass the last time. My concern is, you've got, I know you've got it, everything together, is, and you've put down what's going to be, how much is out of each little thing that's through the county. down what's going to be, how much is out of each little thing that's through the county, and then what the billion of dollars or whatever it is for the 526 bridge. My concern is that, you know what? That wasn't enough money. We're gonna take it out of this other list and put it towards the 526. And all these other projects that are still needed in the county get put off for another 30 years or however long this half-cent sale's gonna be. I think it's going to possibly not pass because people are concerned the same thing is gonna happen again. The other thing is the Parkway. When you come across the Stoner River, it's gonna be a Parkway. I think this whole section is like eight miles long, maybe, if I'm correct? And we get to do 45 miles an hour on it, but you've got a James Island connector that's only three miles, and they're 55 miles an hour. I think somebody's gotta figure this out, why we have to do 45 if you're gonna put this in and make everybody go as a slowpoke. So anyway, I'd like to see it separated on the November ballot if you want something passed.
David Staschukitis, William Hamilton, Dan Fuego.
Good evening. Thanks, thanks for the opportunity. Thanks for the time and your leadership. My name is David Staschukitis. I'm the owner and CEO of Low Country Kason Millwork, 4144 Carolina Commerce Parkway in Latson, South Carolina. I'm here to represent our 55-plus team members and their families in full support of the continuation of the existing transportation sales tax, as been mentioned a lot tonight. This is very important to get these projects going. It's very important for safety and for maintaining the quality of life of Charleston County residents. And then, from a small business perspective, I did wanna point out, you know, it's getting harder and harder to find talent, it's getting harder and harder to maintain profitability, and transportation's a huge, huge part of that. As a small, brief example, we have about 18 to 20 installers making, you know, $40, $50 an hour. We pay them two hours each, every day, to travel to a job site. An hour there, an hour back, at least, unless it's Kiowa, then it's more like four. And so, all in all, we're paying about $300,000 a year just for them to be in their car at those skill levels, and it's just not, it's not maintainable. You can only charge so much for a cabinet or for some millwork. So I highly urge you to support this referendum, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
William Hamilton.
As you came in tonight, an African-American lady gave a lot of you one of these cards. Her name is Louise Brown. 55 years ago, she stopped tanks in the streets of Charleston by singing "We Shall Not Be Moved." Her history, her biography of this great hero of our community is on the website mentioned in these cards. I hope you'll look at it. Car, oh, sorry. Roads and cars will not solve your problems. They haven't solved the problems of any community in the country. The more you build, the more cars you'll have, the more development you'll have, the more traffic you'll induce. It will just get worse. All the roads we've built up till now have made traffic worse. They made traffic worse in Atlanta, DC, New Orleans, Miami, everywhere else in the world, the same thing will happen here. I don't expect anybody here to believe that. You're gonna build the roads anyway if you have the money. I don't know if you're going to have the money. Eight years ago, my organization spent $130,000 and over 4,000 volunteer hours to help pass the half-penny sales tax to build the Low Country Rapid Transit system and obtain $300 million in improved transit. We have not seen it. My membership will not do that work again. Nobody will give me the money to do that again, so I'm certainly not going to be helping you pass the referendum. The good news is, nobody's gonna send us $100,000 to help you beat it either. My membership is hopelessly divided on this. They're not hopelessly divided on their demand that the promises made eight years ago be kept in the LCRT bill. I personally will not vote for any referendum until the LCRT is running all the way from Somerville to downtown Charleston out of traffic, as promised to the people in the I-26 ALT study. I do have elements of my membership, particularly on Johns Island, that are desperate to get more road capacity. The rest of my membership won't speak to them anymore. But I have agreed with them and with some other people in certain other parts near Somerville to work on a set of demands for improvements to bus service and stops that will be implemented before the election. And if that's done, some of them will vote for this referendum. My membership is not united. I understand this is hard. I promise you, the car and asphalt will not solve your problems.
Dan Fuego, Michael Mule, David Burt.
My name's Dan Infinger. Sorry, you can't read my writing. I'm here in actual opposition to this. In 2007, spoke to the engineers at the State Highway Department about 526 and the extension. I live on Johns Island. I've worked in the city of Charleston for 43 years. They said that my commute would be improved by 46 seconds, according to their study. The traffic's worse now than it's ever been, and I doubt seriously it's gonna get better with the completion of 526. 526 is not an interstate. This expansion is a 45 mile an hour disaster. It has no, it's dropping down on a two-lane road. You're gonna improve 1,000 feet on each side of the entrance ramps to it. That's just gonna create a roadblock on River Road. The cost of this project, out of sight, but if it has merit, and you think it has merit, break it out. Let it be separate from the other projects, because there's a $400 million shortfall on the other projects you've listed, and you haven't completed the projects from the 2016 referendum. You haven't even started them. They're not even in the planning stage. So if you wanna take and make this work, if 526 has merit, break it out on its own, and then let it be either voted for or voted down. And if it's voted down, it's the end of the project. It's a 30-year-old boondoggle that continues. And this council basically lied in 2016. They basically said the referendum did not include 526, but y'all recently voted $75 million for the project. What happened to the other, to the flyover at Maybank and, pardon me, at River Road and Monroe? It hasn't even been started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Mule, David Burt, Herbert Drayton.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Mule. I live on Carteret Avenue in West Ashley. I'm a Charleston County homeowner. I'm a taxpayer, but more importantly, I'm a husband and a father. I share this because two weeks ago, my five-year-old son graduated from kindergarten. My friend, Mr. Pryor, was there, was certainly an incredible occasion.
Michael, I've been there with my grandson, okay?
Yes, yes, yes. And it was definitely worthy of a party. And as I know, my friend, Mr. Kibroski, was already thinking, yes, my wife gave me a long honey-do list for the party. But unlike most honey-do lists that she gave me, this one I had done an hour before the party, or so I thought. She gently reminded me that I was supposed to pick up the cake from Costco. And as everyone in this room knows, driving to Costco at 5 o'clock any day of the week is probably the worst idea you can have. I live 3.7 miles away from Costco, and I sat, and I sat, and I sat in traffic. It truly was, by the grace of God, not by existing infrastructure, that I was able to get the cake and walk in the door with a minute to spare. I share this in hopes you will consider spouses like me with honey-do-do lists, parents like me who have to safely drop their kids off at school and get to work successfully on time, and others trying to get from one end of the county to the other. And to please pass this referendum as written, as a whole, united as one, because it will take a united approach. It will take every piece of this referendum to properly relieve traffic, to make our roads safer, and to help marriages like mine with honey-do-do lists. Thank you all very much.
David Burt, Herbert Drayton, Emma Berry.
Good evening. My name is David Burt. I live on 1083 Eaglewood Trail in James Island. I'm here on behalf of Ellis 3P Architects. I have a principal in the firm of Ellis 3P. We have about 90 employees in the Charleston area, and we work downtown. Trying to get downtown is very challenging. Trying to leave downtown is very challenging. And our staff live all over. We have one staff member who drives all the way from the other side of Somerville, and sometimes it takes her two hours to get to work. This infrastructure bill needs to be passed. It needs to be approved. And I want to comment on one other thing about the infrastructure. It's not just transportation. The Low Country Rapid Transit, I know it's in process. I know the design is further along. I know others had said that it's not, or it's not where it should be. It's close. It's real close. This will help get us over the line. What that's gonna offer is another thing, which is an opportunity for more affordable housing in places that can get connected so that they can get to downtown and to other places, up in Somerville and all the way down into Charleston, and through the North Charleston in the neck areas. So please pass this infrastructure bill as it's written. We desperately need this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Herbert Drayton, Emma Berry, Keith Summy.
Good afternoon, chairman and council members. My name is Herbert Drayton. I am here in the capacity as the chair of the Business Advocacy Committee of the Charleston Metro Chamber of Commerce, and also as chair of Palmetto Goodwill. I will, clearly, there's persuasive evidence that the business community supports the sales tax, and we ask that you support it as well. I'll share three examples with you. In a finance committee meeting today with Palmetto Goodwill, the chair, I'm sorry, the president and CEO was looking at a location in Florence. And the question I posed to him was, do we have a ready workforce in that community? And he very excitedly shared with me that there were three dense communities within a 10 to 20-mile radius of the location of the new store. But he's even more excited when he talked about the public transportation. That's the type of algorithm we need our businesses, new and those coming to this area, to use when they're determining where to put businesses. Transportation should not be an issue. There's another major employer in the area who said that they needed to get into the affordable housing space because their workers could not afford to live by. While affordable housing is a chronic condition, transportation is a symptom of what's happening there as well. And lastly, I will share this with you. When we had companies in the area, we lost talent, not because we were not paying a sustainable living wage. We lost talent because our employees, and we're talking nurses and physicians, did not want to sit in traffic to get to work. There is a straight line between from good transportation to personal mobility and economic mobility. The Charleston Metro Chamber of Commerce supports this bill, this tax, and we urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emma Berry, Keith Summy, Rich Thomas.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Emma Berry, and I serve as the Communities and Transportation Project Manager for the Coastal Conservation League, located at 131 Spring Street. I'm here tonight to express the Conservation League's concerns about the proposed transportation sales tax referendum. Charleston County voters last approved the use of a sales tax for transportation projects in 2016. In the time since, only one of those projects has been completed, and several others have been delayed time and time again. Now the county is asking for some of the previously listed projects to once again be funded in this newly proposed referendum. With such little progress made, this leaves no confidence in the minds of voters who will be asked to sign on to another 25-year tax. The county still has money coming in from the two previous taxes until 2027, which begs the question, what's the rush? Why do we need this referendum now? The only priority project in this sales tax is the Mark Clark Extension, which would receive 2.3 billion of the funds, draining funding from other more pressing priorities across Charleston County. There are plenty of other projects that need robust funding, like CARTA, Green Belt, and other local traffic improvements that are not prioritized in this proposed referendum. Extending 526 would destroy 38 acres of saltwater and freshwater wetlands and impact over 30 acres of Jaden's Island County Park. Homes and businesses in historic communities like Gettys Crosscut and Ferguson Village would be displaced. It would escalate sprawl and rural gentrification on Johnson-Wanmata Islands. Collectively, it would impact at least 92 parcels of property, forever altering our community. In exchange for all of that, it would not fix our traffic problems. Since this project was initially conceived in the 1960s, we have learned that highway projects like this do not alleviate traffic congestion. It leads to more development that ultimately makes traffic even worse. That's why every single community along the existing I-526 corridor experiences intense traffic congestion. It's time for Charleston County to walk away from the outdated, overpriced, and environmentally destructive 526 extension project, and in turn, this transportation sales tax that seeks to prioritize it. Thank you.
Keith Summy, Rich Thomas, David Quirk.
Today, this is showing you, do not quit your job. Working around the house is a lot more dangerous. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the sales tax. 30 years ago, a little over 30 years ago, we were faced with the Navy base closing. And we had one employee, employer, that had 30,000 military and almost 10,000 civilian employees. And that fear made us get out and start doing things differently. This body, Charleston County Council, created the Development Alliance, started moving forward and bringing in jobs to replace those we had. Folks, we've got a great place to live, work, and play. And people know it, and they're coming, and they wanna be here, and they wanna live here. But we have not kept up with the transportation needs that we have for the numbers that have been coming, and we have to make it better. Another reason I'm in support of it, I've got a 15-year-old grandson that got his driver's license this week. And it scares me, the traffic flows that we have, the backups that we have, how it is going to be because I've got a 14-year-old, a 13-year-old, and a 12-year-old right behind me. And it worries me because we don't have adequate movement of vehicular traffic, and we have to work to make sure that that happens. Most of these projects are not in North Charleston, but North Charleston feels the backup of everything that happens. So we all are affected, whether we wanna realize it or admit it or not. We have to look forward to the future. We have to look forward to make sure that our children's future, our grandchildren's future, is going to be better. This body has the power to do that. The public will make the final decision whether they vote for it or not. Please, please, give them the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Rich Thomas, David Quirk, Harry Pollockron.
I'm Rich Thomas, 4360 Betsy Carrison Speedway on Johns Island. Even by the standards of the last 12 years or so that I've been coming here, I've been astounded at the gaslighting, mistruths, falsehoods, twisted logic, and general nonsense in the discussion surrounding this referendum. The proposed tax provides even less percentage-wise to CARTA and Green Belt than the last one in 2016. There's no cap on the 526 extension expenditures. All these sweetener projects that people are talking about is helping traffic, they're way underfunded. There's not enough money for all those projects on the list. And we don't know when they would come, 25 years from now? So I don't think that's gonna help problems around here. So all this obfuscation around the referendum is really perplexing. I also looked at the financing costs for the 526 extension, $650 million or so in financing costs on top of 2.2, 2.3 billion. That's almost $3 billion, billion dollars for nine and a half miles of road. That's $316 million, million dollars per mile. That is absolutely insane. You know, people are talking about housing, transportation alternatives, things that would help the quality of life. $316 million per mile. And we have homeless people. We have people who can't afford to live around here and are getting pushed out. So I really urge you to think about these aspects while you're drafting this referendum. I mean, I know you're gonna do it, so it's gonna come down to the voters, but thank you for the opportunity to speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
David Quirk, Harry Pollockron. David Quirk, Harry Polycron, Belvin Alisov.
I may be quirky, but I'm David Quick, Q-I-C-K. So I live at 1502 Village Square in Mount Pleasant, and I'd like to tell you—I can remember when 526 was extended into Mount Pleasant. And what has followed is the enabling of suburban sprawl, which has then led to traffic problems on Highway Seventeen and Forty-One. You all have dealt with the Forty-One thing. We're building a highway through a park, a precious park—that county park. Now, we want to build through James Island County Park for this extension. I just—you know, I don't know where we got off track with wanting to keep John's Island rural, keep Allendale and McClellanville rural, preserve our farmland, preserve our green space, pervur—preserve—this is—I hear about people saying, oh, this is a safety issue. Well, do you all look at the TV in the morning at the traffic report or in the afternoon? When the traffic jam is on the interstate? When the accidents are on the interstate? I don't take 526. Mr. Prior over here said, I bet everybody in Mount Pleasant took 526. I never take 526 here. Never. I avoid it like the plague. It's horrible. Like many people have said, we cannot fix this with more roads. We need to fix our existing roads. We have so many priorities. We have so many local priorities that are not going to get funded because so much of this money is going to this boondoggle of a project that is only going to make traffic worse and is going to exacerbate suburban sprawl in an area that we need to be preserved as farmland and forest. I'm not a member of the Chamber of Commerce, but I'm a longtime member of Charleston County, and I care about this community. I care about all of it—the rural, the urban, and everything. Let's keep our rural areas rural.
Harry Polycron, Belvin Alisov, Leon Savernakis.
Hi, I'm Harry Polycron. I live on Seabrook Island. While I like most of the things advertised in this half-cent sales tax—if it's—526 is bundled into that package, I'm disinclined to vote for it. It's just too expensive. Two-point-three billion dollars. When you compare that to the projected cost of the seawall around Charleston Harbor, something that is mandatory to keep the city alive, it comes out that it's twice as expensive it is to build that seawall, even more than twice as expensive. These numbers—two-point-three billion—not many of us have a good idea what that represents. I had a little bit of fun. I Googled, how much time goes by in two-point-three billion seconds? Well, it comes out to seventy-three years. So if you could picture somebody doling out dollar bills like one per second—he's on a stadium full of money—it would take him seventy-three years to pay for this I-526. So thank you very much. I hope you separate the 526 from the rest of the projects. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Belvin Alisov, Leon Savernakis, Gary Brewer.
Hello, Council. Belvin Alisov, I organize with the Charleston Climate Coalition. We have a great opportunity here to push forward multimodal transportation here in Charleston County, to kickstart our bike connectivity, to truly fund card in the way it deserves to be funded, to make smart, targeted traffic improvements. And Council seems ready to risk it all for a shambolic and controversial expansion of the highway—that if traffic signs of induced demand is to be understood, won't truly help with travel time. Councilmember Honeycutt was quoted in Charleston City Paper as being opposed to separating any projects that pit one area of the county against each other. Well, the majority of the referendum's projects don't pit the Low Country against each other, but 526 really does. There are Facebook groups—Build It!,8526, Brother Against Brother. I mean, you have today to show all of the focus, all of the attention has been on 526. A referendum that I believe would be a relatively uncontroversial success is on track to be something that I and many others will strenuously oppose. If it weren't for—if it were the wetland destruction, displacement of black communities, and massive climate pollution represented by the 526 Extension, I would oppose it for the opportunity cost alone. Imagine how much we could do for our public transportation with 2.3 billion dollars. And that's what would actually help with traffic, is taking cars off of the roads instead of inducing more demand. It's not too late to separate the Mark Clark Extension from the referendum and show responsible leadership by ensuring a big step forward in transportation funding happens in November. I worry otherwise what will happen. And I'm tired of hearing the word "boondoggle." So, thanks so much.
Leon Savernakis, Gary Brewer.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Good to see you all. Thank you for moving this issue forward for the public to be heard. As you, you know, have heard a lot of this has focused on 526. And of course, I've been a member of this council and now a member of the legislature. And as a council member and as a legislator, the district I represent is dead center for the area that would be served by the completion of 526. I've watched my entire life this corridor grow without 526 in place and become gridlocked and dangerous. And the waiting has been difficult and painful for a lot of folks. I think—I was talking to Ron Mitchum in the back—I think 526 first got approved in concept fifty years ago. Literally, tens and tens of thousands of units of growth—housing units and business units of growth—have occurred in this county with the planned completion of this at its center. To go back now is, you know, unconscionable, right? So keep the referendum in place and keep it to one question. I would—you know, and let the voters decide. I would remind everybody here, all these previous segments of 526 got completed, and the folks who are waiting now helped pay that bill. All these previous referendums that got approved, the folks that are waiting on the completion of this project pitched in with their votes and their dollars. And it's time for this area of the county to get what has been promised for a long time. Applaud Mayor Summy for coming out here and continuing to show leadership. I was a child—father without children yet when I was on this council and we started debating this. My kids are—two of them are in college now. They're all teenage drivers, and what he said about the fear really resonated with me, and especially when my kids strive to John's Island. And the folks that live on John's Island have to live that way with that fear every day, and that's just not right. So stay the course, and let's have this referendum as one question and let the voters vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last one, Gary Brewer.
Chairman, Council, thank you all so much for having me. It's always tough to follow my colleague. Not only does he bring up good points, but I have to raise the mic another foot just to get up here and speak. But I wanted to come here and speak to everybody. So I represent House District 114, which is West Ashley and Dorchester Counties. And I would tell you, over the past two terms, so I ran for the first time eighteen months ago. We were elected, and we knocked on over five thousand doors. This time, we knocked on over six thousand doors. And I'm going to tell you overwhelmingly—and Councilman Moody's heard me say this again—knocking doors, everybody's told us. Number-one issue: infrastructure. Number-two issue: infrastructure. Number-three: no soliciting, right? But when people hear in the State House over and over again, they hear that I'm from Charleston, that all I hear over and over again is, man, the growth down there is unreal. Man, it takes an hour to get to Charleston from Charleston. They're not wrong. It takes a while to get around our city. We need to move forward with this referendum. This project will never get cheaper, I can promise you. But I will tell you what—the need will continue to get greater. We have to make sure that we deliver for our people. Our people deserve a quality of life. They are asking for it. They've asked it for me to my face, and they continue to ask me for it over again. I thank you all for your leadership. I thank you all for your stewardship, and I hope to be working with you all, continuing to work for you all for the next few years. Thank you, sir.
This is a public hearing. Do we get to ask questions to the staff? I understand a public hearing is give and take. Isn't that the rules? We did it at the last public hearing when we had the moratorium issue. We had on the settlement communities—I have.
You do get to ask questions when it does come up on the agenda. It is on the agenda later.
It's a—I thought at a public hearing that the purpose is, in addition to having unlimited speakers—which is a good thing—that we get to ask questions. We've heard from some of the most powerful and economic powerful people in the county. I think we have a right to ask now questions of the staff. It's a public hearing, and I'd like to ask some. And I—there were questions from—everybody's here. A public hearing is a give and take so the public can know. I last asked at the last hearing—I was accused of not being accurate—that the cost is 1.8 billion alone. And I'd asked, is my correct? It's now 648 million for the management of the debt for that—for 526. Am I correct in that? I thought—in a public hearing, people have a right to know what the numbers are. At other public hearings, we get a right to ask.
Mr. Kowalski, the cost of the project is $2,361 million.
You're talking about this—the 526.
The Mark Clark Project is that number. It has not changed in over two years. We were briefed in May of 2022 by the Department of Transportation. Council suggested that they hire a third party to vet that number, and they went and did that, and the number has not changed.
That includes the 648 million?
The cost of the project is 2.35 billion dollars. Think about it—if you're buying a house, you pay 400,000 for a hypothetical house. Where the funds come from doesn't change how much you pay for the house. You could either finance it. You could have saved up money. And it's speculative to start adding interest expense into the cost of the project because we don't know if we might be able to get money from other people. So I would dispute adding the interest expense as a cost of the project. It's still 2.35 billion dollars.
Then forgive me, I got a statement—I think—from Mr. Giles telling me that the 750 million dollars that was the cost of financing, it's 648 million dollars was specifically for the financing of the debt of 526. Was that not correct, Mr. Giles?
Paying for interest expense is not part of the cost of the project. But yes, your number is close to 650,000.
Okay, 650 million. And my second question, then—the way the referendum is—if there's any cost overruns —because we know it could take ten, twenty years or whatever—we're on the hook totally for that. Is that correct? If there's any cost overruns to build it, whether it's 10 million or 10 billion.
I believe that I will defer to the county attorney on contractual matters related to that.
Well, who pays for it if there's cost overruns pursuant to the sales tax? My understanding is that we're responsible for that, and that also—that of all the other items on this, there's 420 million dollars short. So none of them would ever get built. Unless we get 420 million dollars from another source, there's no schedule for those other projects. So my question is, this really is about 526? And the people there have a right to—you know, they're sitting in traffic, and they have a legitimate right. But we have—this is for all the county. And my point is, we should be able to address that, but we have one project here, and everything else is held hostage to that because there's no guarantee in this referendum that any of those other projects will be built. There's no timetable. There's no guarantee. There's no priority, and there's a lack of 420 million dollars for it. Am I correct in that—that there's a 420 million dollar shortfall in what those other projects would cost that is not included in that referendum? If anybody can answer that.
There is a number for carryover projects from the second sales tax to the third sales tax. I don't have it memorized, but it appears to be more like 282 million. I'm not sure where the 420 million is coming from.
Well, I'm talking about the other projects listed on the sales tax for the 5.3 billion, that there's 420 more million dollars that would be necessary to complete the different projects that are listed on it. And at a public hearing, we're just discussing the numbers. I think that's important. Am I correct in that?
Mr. Giles, I believe, Councilman, that what—the numbers are—if I'm not mistaken, Mac—if the county is obligated 100% on every part. That does not include any federal funds, any state funds, or State Infrastructure Bank or anything at all like that. That the numbers are based on 100% of the TST providing and—to give us the maximum number. Is that correct, sir?
The 420 million is the amount that the State Infrastructure Bank has applied to that priority. So that must be where that number was coming from.
Is it part of the sales tax referendum to obligate the federal government to pay any shortfalls?
Mr. Kowalski, I think there may be—we're losing something in translation here. You're totaling the estimated costs that our transportation team put together of the projects that we've listed. And we indicated very clearly when we passed this on the first reading that, yes, we've built in a buffer because every project we have currently going has substantial contributions from other sources. What we don't want to do is put out a list of projects that all these people in Charleston County vote for, and then we don't have enough. So I mean, Mac, I can't remember the number, but what is the federal match on Maine and Seventeen, Segment A? It's substantial, 40 million?
It's an excellent 40 million.
Yes. So we've got Infrastructure Bank money and federal funds, CHAT's money, coming in on almost every project. Once the projects are shovel-ready, they become eligible for those monies. We expect the same thing with 526 as well. But we have to prove through the availability of resources that we are putting out to the voters that that money would be available, that Charleston County could raise it. And that's what we're doing by virtue of these lists. It's just a priority list, and all of them are scalable. There are many communities that have said, we don't want to widen all the way down Ashley River Road. We don't want to widen all the way down Bo Hickett Road. When communities say that, we're never going to spend all the money that we set aside or budgeted to widen the whole thing. So we don't spend that much. We've built that into these priorities so that we can have some flexibility and provide voters with what they wanted based on their feedback in February.
My point, then, is that on a sales tax, when people vote on that, they think the projects listed are going to be built from what they're voting on. In my opinion, something being eligible for matching funds is much different than saying that matching funds are available or guaranteed by voting on it. It's a fantasy. People in Myrtle Beach are still waiting decades to get the federal money for Interstate Seventy-Three. This is an interstate through the Sea Islands. And so we have an obligation to fulfill the needs now of people that are in traffic all over the county. And I fear that, you know, we've—about 46% of the referendum is for 526. So it really is that. And the other things are—as you just said, there's no guarantee that we have the money to project—to finish those. So I feel how can we, in good faith, put out something that we don't have the money to do on the sales tax referendum that we're putting out in the hope that we can get more money? To me, that's—would not be ethical or fair.
With all due respect to Mr. Kowalski, I just want to make the clarification. I did not say there was no guarantee those projects wouldn't be done. I said, when they go put out, there'll be lots of different factors that we cannot predict sitting here. We do have lots of projects from the 16-half cent sales tax that have come before this council time and time and time again. And we just this week sent Central Park and Riverland back to the public instead of moving forward with the project that we approved so that we could get the input of those residents. So those types of things, we just can't foresee. I would intend for every single one of these projects to get funded. It is not fantasy to say that we would get funding from other sources. We do that in every other project.
Wouldn't it be accurate, then, to put in the referendum that this would not fund
these, that the completion of these projects are dependent on sources from other funding that we don't know about? I would agree with that. If we put that language in, I think that will be accurate. The language is not in there now—that this will not fund these projects. It's dependent on money from other sources that we hope to get, but we don't know. I think that would be honest and fair and accurate to put that language in there. Then I agree with that.
It's also dependent on the voter's approval when it goes. It's also dependent on getting permits from the various bodies that we have to get permits from. There are so many factors. We have to start somewhere, and this is it. This is where we start.
Mr. Kowalski, we still have public comments to go through, and we do have— And we do have the transportation sales tax coming up on the agenda. So I think we will finish, this, this finishes our public comments, public hearing, and we will, we have our public comments right now. How many do we have?
We have seven people.
Seven? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We do. We have another opportunity to do it. It comes up, it's in number four.
No intention to hold up public comments, so I will wait patiently.
Public comments, thank you.
The first person is Anthony Bryant, and then Mary Howard and Robert Habersham.
Commission on Law Enforcement Agency, Inc. I spoke to Francis Moore, on the accreditation officer, Harry Bolander. Eighty percent of law enforcement officers are members of PLEA. SLED, FBI, Homeland Security, U.S. Secret Service are all members. Are you aware of that group? Are you aware of Mr. Bolander? Well, I made public comments, I made five public comments in my lifetime. I'm not in the popularity business. I'm not here for popularity, I'm not here for any group, any church group. I'm in my own individual agency. I don't, I don't come to meetings to be, to make any friends. I come here just to lay out opportunities, benefits, and advancement in the public interest of the people. Right? That's where I come from. That's the era I come from. I don't come from an era of Tom and Coonan and tap dancing. I don't do that well. What I do well is just be black. And be a polite, polite generally black about being black. I, I don't want to be Republican black, Democratic black, I just want to be blue black. And so where we are right now with law enforcement, our sheriff department, is that when this is over, it's over. So if someone gets shot, beaten, humiliated, you just write the check. So for, for young brothers this summer, we are, that's a blanket assertion, we are criminals first. It's a blanket assertion, no matter what you say, if you a brother in this country, you are criminal upon recognition of your identity. And even that will cause you a problem. So I'm not going to go play no games with Tim Scott, who wrote Invisible Man over again. He rewrote Ellison's book on the invisible black man. He rewrote the book. Book been written already. We gonna go ahead and be invisible. How you gonna be invisible twice? You can't, you can't, you can't write Ellison, though Ellison's a genius. Tim Scott's question.
Thank you.
Mary Howard, Robert Habersham, Pearl Askew.
Hello, I'm Mary Howard. I just wanted to make a comment about the Johns Island, the Section C. Wondered if we could do an addendum. You go to Eden, the, they're going to four lane from Maybank all the way down Bo Hickett down to Betsy Carrison. They're going to stop at Edenville with the four lane, and then they're going to make it two lane. And they have the thing with the bicycles and whatnot coming up. My question, if, you know, you, you're going to have the PGA coming. This is coming whether we want it or not, out on Johns Island. Years ago, I went to some public hearing that we had over on the island and it was, I was talking to some member of the staff and the, the comment was, we just don't have the funding for it. It doesn't matter if you don't want it or not. They didn't say that part of it. But it'll be here when we get the funding and we're going to do it. Then we'll hold a public hearing to see which of our things you want. Kind of feels like you disregard what we want out on the island sometimes. However, it would make more sense, when you get to Edenville, you got four lanes coming down, you get to Edenville and all of a sudden it's two lane. What do you think's going to happen? It's going to bottleneck again. I'm not sure why they didn't at least put a central lane in there so that people coming in and out onto Bo Hickett could at least get in a lane where they can turn. The other thing is, that bicycle lane and pedestrian thing is all, I guess, up under the right of way. There's a lot of empty land across the street. Why didn't come up here? Because you're not impacting as many businesses and houses. And you have, starting at Winsboro up to McDonald's, it's not very far, half a mile, there's already sidewalk on that side that could be improved a little bit. You know, I think, I think there could be some things fixed.
Thank you.
Richard Habersham, Pearl Askew, Torrey Fields.
I'm Richard Habersham, 2938 Edith Souths Road in Mont Pleasant. First, I'd like to thank council and staff for their hard work on Highway 41, Highway 41, Quarter 7A compromise. All the community in the area that is affected by this project had to give something up for this project to work. But on last Wednesday, at the public hearing, made me very upset. One gentleman from Virginia, and had been in the area less than two years, said that the county should pay the resident of the Phillips community their fair market value for their property so they could move and have a better quality of life. Yes. Another gentleman said, where he came from, they just paid the property on the off and build the road. Well, Phillip is, excuse me, well, Phillip is, is our home. It's not just property. This is where we live, this is where we been at. The Phillips community have been around since 1875, and before that, been a plantation since the late 1600. So please keep your support for Highway 7, 41, Quarter Compromise. And on the moratorium of the major subdivision, there's a very important thing to the settlement community. We don't want to stop all development, we just want to slow it down. We've seen what overdevelopment done to Mont Pleasant. And we don't want that to happen to the settlement community. So we as the historic community is very, is in, in support of the two-year moratorium. Thank you.
Pearl Askew, Torrey Fields, Fred Smalls.
Good evening. Pearl Askew, 977 Gatsinville Road, Owandaw, South Carolina. I'm just here to support the moratorium for the settlement communities. I have some additional, at May, we want to present some additional signatures from the Phillips community, Seven Miles community, Bee's Field community. And if we can present these and get our copies, send our copies back for our record, we'd appreciate that. And thanks to staff for working hard with the settlement communities to come to some kind of conclusion to help us slow the growth down. We are over, overwhelmed with it. As was explained previously, with traffic and buildings, we will have that in these predominantly African-American communities. No sidewalks, no drainage, just building. You ha, we have to stop and see what direction we could go in to be progressive, not only for the people who've lived here for hundreds of years, but for our newcomers as well. They expect better, they expect better from us. So hopefully, this can move forward and we can get the things that we need to make our communities better. Thank you.
Torrey Fields, Fred Smalls, Craig Askew.
Good evening. I was, I mean, so excited to hear about everybody so concerned about infrastructure and we want improvements, the hell we want our city, our Charleston County to be better. And it always dawns on me, everybody wants better for everybody else besides the community that has existed in this community for such a long time. To, I'm talking about the Acabey community and what happened on last week, when we have a community, we, everybody talk about infrastructure, and the middle of the road fell out because of a water pipeline that had been there since 1929. 94-plus years old. So while we're talking about infrastructure and improvement, let's don't forget about the communities that's been there for all this long time. Let's, let's stop some of the building that's going on in these older communities. Let's put in a study to see if we have the capacity with the electricity, and again, with the water, to handle some of these new houses. We're building houses in these communities, they're putting up faster and faster, and I'm okay for growth. But make sure we got the infrastructure to match the growth. It's a shame that even now, in 2024, that we're struggling with pipes from 1929, flat out those communities, certain churches were flat out around the area, and here we are talking about billions of dollars, and I'm all for the half-cent sales project. Worked on them before, I hope it passed, and I hope it passed this time. But let's not forget those areas. I think a study need to be done before you build more houses in those areas. And I'm asking, I'm forming a committee right now, to comment, we may even be asking for a moratorium to stop all building until we can get a study, a comprehensive study, that those pipes, that the infrastructure can handle the new buildings in those areas. So I know there's a group that's coming tonight, trying to get some money to build some houses. I'm asking, please, at least table it for right now. We need a study done to make sure that when they put those houses there, that those houses, those lines can handle this capacity of water going through those lines. And let's not overlook our older settlement communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Smalls, Craig Askew.
Good evening. I'm Fred Smalls. I live at 2959 Elijah Smalls Road in the Phillips community. Just briefly, two things. One, we, the Phillips community, we are in favor of and fully support the proposed moratorium that is being planned. And we hope that this will go forward. We feel this is really and truly a good thing for not just our community, but all of the unincorporated areas and the settlement communities. We fully support the Laurel Hill Parkway expansion to Highway 41. This project directly and effectively helps to reduce the traffic congestion on Highway 41. The studies has also deemed this project as the best route because it poses the least amount of negative impacts on all of the communities directly involved. That is Park West, Dunes West, Phillips, and Seven Mile. If the studies have already deemed this and the process has already been completed, why would we not go forward with this project? It is fair for everyone. We have, keep hearing about 20 acres of wetlands that are being disturbed if we use the Laurel Hill Plantation Parkway. That is not a true statement. The wetlands that are being affected are on Highway 41. And they are still being destroyed. Construction is still being made. Development of restaurants, grocery stores, gas stations, that's where the destruction of the wetlands are taking place, not through the Laurel Hill Expressway if it is used. So we ask this council to continue to move forward with this. This project has been going on since 2005, I believe, and now we're nearly to completion. Please, let's not take a step backwards. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The last person, Craig Askew.
Good evening. Craig Askew, 987 Gatsinville Road in the big city of Owandaw. I would first like to, around this time in June 17, 2015, the Charleston church shooting happened, and that was really, really impactful in my life. And I know we also had the firemen to pass away. But the Charleston church shooting was really, really impactful to me because, because those people who died in the church were all mostly from settlement communities. And, and I feel like we're under attack. Almost every week, there's something on Charleston County's agenda that directly affects Ten Mile, where I live. Either it's planning, public works, or HBC meeting, planning commission meeting, or county council meeting. And I do the best I can to attend, to try to help work and protect my community in all settlement communities. The, and Ten Mile is steadily under attack, just like all of the settlement communities. We truly, truly do appreciate, though, the hard work the staff has put in to come out to the community and learn and engage about, and learn about the value of settlement communities and what they mean to the greater Charleston population. And not just downtown Charleston is a, a nice place to go and learn about history, but there's settlement communities too. I have sat at the feet of people like Mr. Habersham and Mr. Ford and learned so much more about my community. And I understand why we're under attack. I really do. Because we're a resilient community, we're very strong and brilliant people. And, and in that case, you, you, you come under attack. But we ask that the stopgap measures be implemented while the building moratorium readings are taking place. Developers are quickly trying to slide through application processes for subdivisions. Some have been under R4 requirements, submitting applications to go back to R4 zoning. These properties, they want to acquire and perform other tactics to get, get, to get them under character, under characteristically in our communities. And we need that to stop. We're just asking that you support the, the moratorium, continue, continue supporting moratorium, and remember those that passed the, in the Charleston church shooting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Askew. We're going to take about a five-minute break. And I wish everybody back here in five minutes so we can start right back up. Thank y'all very much. much.
On number eight, B.
Good evening. Now we'll pick up our county council agenda. First item, Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Mr. Werman, would you give us a pledge? And Mr. Boykin, the prayer? See, I mean, the prayer and Mr. Boykin, the pledge.
Let's bow our heads. Lord, we, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to share in the joy of your creation. We thank you for this opportunity to serve you and to do your will in this community. We ask that you bless and comfort all who are suffering here in our community and throughout the world, especially to help us to remember the lives lost at Mother Emanuel nine years ago. Let us continue to remember and honor them. We ask you to, to bless everyone who serves this community, as part of this county, as part of a municipality, or nonprofit, or community leaders, many of whom are here with us tonight. We ask that, that you give us strength and insight and clarity in our hearts and minds to do your will as we take on the business of the county tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Minutes of June four twenty twenty-four. Moved and seconded. Any, any additions, deletions, questions?
Commendations to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Third reading ordinances, Rutledge Tomb Site.
An ordinance rezoning the real property located at fifteen ninety-four Joe Rouse Road, a zero point zero seven acre portion of parcel identification number five eight three zero 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 one six, from the special management S three zoning district to the Rutledge Tomb Site, excuse me, plan development PD one eighty-nine zoning district. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. Twenty-one seventy-seven Ashley River Road.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Comprehensive Plan MAP three point one point thirteen Ashley River Road Corridor Overlay Zoning District to amend the zoning in future land use designation for the real property located at twenty-one seventy-seven Ashley River Road, parcel identification number three five four one two zero 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 six, from neighborhood commercial designation to community commercial designation. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Before these young people move, I just want to congratulate them, and I think they're going to do a fine job on developing that property. And I wish you the best and wish you most success.
Thank you. That was the first one. Okay, now the second one, twenty-one seventy-seven National River Road.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance Number twelve oh two as amended, Chapter five overlay and special purpose zoning districts, MAP five point ten and MAP five point ten point C, to amend the zoning designation for the real property located at twenty-one seventy-seven Ashley River Road, parcel identification number three five four one two zero 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 six, from neighborhood commercial designation to community commercial designation. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Okay, financial incentives for seventy-six fourteen South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and seventy-six fourteen South Rail LLC, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates, including Allegiance Flag Supply LLC, a sponsor affiliate whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with seventy-six fourteen South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC as sponsor affiliate, providing for payment by seventy-six fourteen South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC as sponsor affiliate of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters related thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
FY twenty-five county budget, Mr. Boykin?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move the funds currently designated for the animal shelter contract from the sheriff's budget into the county's non-departmental budget, and to change the language of the line item from animal shelter expenses to animal services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, it was moved by Mr. Boykin, seconded by Mr. Moody. Any, any further discussion? Mr. Kabrowski?
What's the difference between animal shelter and animal services?
The, that's what that, that, the funding is going to go for, the funding is going to go for the animal, uh, control, or whatever we want to call it, whatever we're dealing with there. Mr. Boykin, you want to elaborate on that?
Sure.
Um, we're in, obviously in process with Charleston Animal Society over contractual matters. And this is, we're in a situation that we're not sure what the outcome is going to be in the process of us working together for an, an outcome. And this will give us freedom and flexibility in the use of those funds during this current, coming budget year as we work through a resolution on the matter.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Which of our councilperson serves on the Animal Society Board?
Mr. Darby, I believe.
No one anymore.
No, no one anymore? Okay. Oh, okay. You kicked us off, he said.
Oh, I see.
They, they did not kick us off. The, the person who, the person who has been appointed has not been attending their, their meeting.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Your name? Yes, sir. Okay. An ordinance providing for the levy of taxes for corporate purposes of Charleston County for the fiscal year beginning July first twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-five, hereafter referred to as fiscal year twenty twenty-five, making appropriations from the general fund and other funds of Charleston County for such purposes, and further providing for the levy of taxes for corporate purposes of Charleston County, including the O'Endall McLoughlinville Consolidated Fire Protection District, East Cooper Fire District, North Charleston, North Charleston County Fire District, West St. Andrews Fire District, and Trident Technical College for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, providing for the appropriations from such special funds created for the purposes of the O'Endall McLoughlinville Consolidated Fire Protection District, East Cooper Fire District, Northern Charleston County Fire District, West St. Andrews Fire District, and Trident Technical College, in order to supply the necessary functions of the units, providing for budget control of the appropriations by the Charleston County Council and the county administrator, making provisions for the fiscal affairs of Charleston County, and providing for the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount up to fifty million dollars for the Charleston County, and up to one million dollars for the O'Endall McLoughlinville Consolidated Fire Protection District as amended. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton? Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. FY twenty-five special purpose districts budgets, third reading?
An ordinance provide, I'm sorry, an ordinance approving the budget for the fiscal year beginning July first twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-five, and directing the auditor of Charleston County to levy the necessary millage and the treasurer to collect taxes for the Charleston County Park and Recreation Commission, the Cooper River Park and Playground Commission, the North Charleston District, the St. Andrews Parish Parks and Playground Commission, the St. John's Fire District, and the St. Paul's Fire District, and providing for the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount up to three million dollars for the Charleston County Park and Recreation Commission, up to one million one hundred thousand dollars for the St. Andrews Parks and Playground Commission, and up to one million five hundred thousand dollars for the St. John's Fire District. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. City of Charleston Transfer of Election Authority, third reading?
An ordinance approving and accepting the complete transfer of authority to conduct municipal elections for the city of Charleston to the Board of Elections and Voter Registration of Charleston County. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt? Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. Second reading ordinances, amend county fee ordinance to implement FY twenty-five budget.
Mr. Chairman, could you possibly move full E up, please, sir?
Pardon me?
Could you move full E?
Uh, in front of the rest of them?
Yes, sir, if it's permissible.
Uh, I think so, certainly.
Thank you, sir.
So, transportation, sales tax referendum ordinance, second reading?
An ordinance to levy and impose a one-half of one percent sales and use tax, subject to a referendum within Charleston County pursuant to section four dash thirty-seven dash thirty of the Code of Laws of South Carolina in nineteen seventy-six, as amended, to define the specific purposes and designate the projects for which the proceeds of the tax may be used, to provide the maximum time for which such tax may be imposed, to provide the estimated tax, estimated cost of the projects funded from the proceeds of the tax, to provide for a countywide referendum on the imposition of the sales and use tax and the issuance of general obligation bonds, and to prescribe the contents of the ballot questions in the referendum, to provide for the conduct of the referendum by the Board of Elections and Voter Registration of Charleston County, to provide for the administration of the tax, if approved, to provide for the payment of the tax, if approved, and to provide for the other matters relating thereto, with the right to amend up to third reading. Mr. Boykin?
Do we have a discussion first?
Absolutely.
I'm just going to articulate my, over the years, even back in two thousand sixteen when I opposed this matter. But just a couple additional things. I'm just going to list them, so that I won't be too verbose. Is it the, the dollar amount of two hundred eighty-seven million dollars a mile? Is it the dollar amount of $287 million a mile actually double taxation because the folks in our country are not paying for this, even though we pay our fair share of taxes, that they should too have a burden on this as well? Also, the African-American lands, which are going to be taken ultimately within a generation or two. I also oppose, just because the more roads that you have, there are going to be more cars, and the question that has never been answered, been asked was, what does one do when 526 is filled to capacity? That question is yet to be answered, it would be nice to know that. So, those are my points. I've never considered myself a conservative, because that word carries all type of, and all type of categories, but in terms of being fiscal, I just think that $287 million a mile is just simply too much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, I'm happy to offer some thoughts on this, and thank you for, you know, carving out a little bit of opportunity for discussion here. You know, we heard a lot tonight about giving folks a choice, and I think everyone on this panel would agree that we need to give folks a choice. I think we have a serious disagreement about what that really means and what that looks like. I think that bifurcating the question is the most choice that we can give folks, because we have seen, and I think Mr. Kabrowski has done a great job of making clear that the costs of this do, the costs of this being the 526 extension, do preclude and do sort of box out a lot of choice that we would have. We can't predict the future, how all this shakes out is obviously going to depend on a lot of things, but we are clearly, I think, more constrained when we can't use, you know, roughly half of the, half of the funding that would come from this tax. Certainly, I hope that number can go down, but I just don't think we can rely on that at this point, and so the opportunity cost, which was something that was also mentioned, is something that's at the forefront of my mind. You know, I think the opportunity, when you talk about induced demand, when you talk about stopping the development patterns that have sort of brought us to this position, I think the opportunity is to start shifting away from that, to make deeper investments in the policies that shift us away from what brought us here in the first place. Things like the LCRT, things like CARTA, things like green space, I think those are the treatments for the disease rather than treating the symptom. And, you know, I think that we can just look at the priority projects, we can look at the CARTA investment, you know, we were in a CARTA meeting last week, and we heard that there's this great downtown transit study that's been done, but it's going to require $2 million more dollars to fund that, which I don't think is really realistically anywhere in the CARTA's budget, and that just speaks to right now, doesn't speak to what the world looks like 20 years from now. You know, the LCRT is something that I know a lot of folks on both sides of this issue support. I am deeply troubled by the fact that the Durant overpass and the Milford overpass, for that matter, are not on this priority projects list. You know, those, everyone in my neighborhood is going to want the Durant overpass just so they don't get stuck in trains at all, but, you know, those are also LCRT facilitating projects. So, the slower these buses are, the less success that project's going to be, and so that's a regional impact, so, you know, that's something that could be corrected even if there is a single question, so I would advocate for folks to do that. I think that these opportunity costs are too much for me to support, I've made that clear before, but I thank Mr. Kabrowski and Mr. Darby for making their points as well, always cogently made, and ultimately, I just don't see why we can't break it up and give folks the most choice possible. Thank you.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Can second the, to Mr. Darby and Mr. Werman, and I heard all the people that came to speak tonight, both pro and con, and we have an awesome responsibility of taking care of the transportation needs of the county for the next 25 years, and I do feel we're all in this together, it's a countywide thing, but what we're doing today is we're going to vote on putting interstate highway through the Sea Islands of Charleston. And I wish, you know, the people are miserably stuck in traffic and deserve a solution, but I've been on, we're going on two years now, and I always hope that we can come up and work together as a compromise to address the congestion on and off Johns Island, James Island, and West Ashley in a fiscally responsible manner. I don't think we've ever done that. It's all presented, if you don't want to spend, you know, $2.5 billion on one project, you want people to be in congestion and misery. I thought that we had an opportunity here with very intelligent, good people, all concerned and hearing from their constituents to come up with a plan that would address that in a rational way, but this is fiscally irresponsible to put $2.43 billion on one project, and from the questions they asked before, it's clear that all the overruns, we've seen how this has gone from hundreds of millions to billions, and as this is built over the next decade or more, if it costs 100 million more, 1 billion more, we're solely on the hook. Nobody else is going to come to the rescue. We're totally, if we pass this as is, we're totally on the hook for that. I don't see how, and people desperately want solutions to their traffic problems, and it makes people do irrational things. I still, as we're voting on this, I still found that as a taxpayer and a person who's looking from the outside in, how could we have spent $75 million of other people's money, taxpayers' money, on something that may not happen? It may pass, it may not pass, but it makes people do totally irrational things, and what universe is it fair and honorable to spend $75 million of other people's money on the hope that we pass the referendum? None of us know that. We, all we had to do was wait a year, and I said, that sets the tone. We haven't finished a project from the other years, and I did notice that the amount of Green Belt funding is the 20% reduction proportion wise from the referendum from 2016, and 100% reduction in amount from the one in 2006. And I just wish that we have, again, an obligation to look at the problems of the county as a whole, and we are missing opportunity to work together to find out real solutions that are affordable for the, to get people off Johns Island, James Island, and they've always acted, if you're not for this, you want to keep people in misery. Well, with $5.3 billion, we could have done things for the future. There's virtually nothing in here for flooding. This is a major problem we have, and the ordinance does allow for flood issues regarding highways, projects, and I feel that what happens for 25 years to spend, you know, all, half our money on one project, I don't find it fiscally responsible. We all said what we ran for, I ran as a fiscal conservative and conservationist, and I feel it fails on both those things, and anybody that doesn't think induced demand's going to cause a traffic nightmare and transform these areas, they need to go where bypasses have been created. Go to Jacksonville, Florida, go to, you know, Charlotte. In the beginning, it's good, and over time, it makes things worse and miserable for everybody. People will be displaced, middle-class people will be displaced from the area. I've seen when it happened in Northern Mount Pleasant. We talked about the settlement communities, well, there's saying there's communities like that all over. It's going to cause intense demand and new development, and we saw, we heard today from some of the most powerful and connected people in the county, and I would suggest that it's the policies of those people that brought us here, that all the building, any cost, to build homes here, build homes there, build homes, roads here and there, that's what brought us to this point of traffic nightmare. So, what we're doing is more of that, we're inducing more, all the things that brought us here, without putting infrastructure in place, we're going to do on steroids if we vote for this. And at the very least, we should allow people to have a choice and bifurcate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kabrowski. Anyone else? All right.
You ready for the roll?
Ready for roll?
Yes, sir.
Roll call vote?
I read all of them.
I did read it.
You read it? Okay, thank you, Ms. Werman, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with six ayes and three nays.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can we do 4F while we hear some of these good people that need historic district and leave?
That sounds good, that's a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Pryor.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations, ordinance, oh, number 1202 as amended, at chapter eight subdivision regulations and chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances of the county of Charleston, at section 21-6 subdivision plot application reports, to provide for a temporary moratorium for 24 months on the acceptance and processing of major subdivision applications in Charleston County historic districts with the right to amend up to third reading. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton? Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Blacked out, I'm sorry.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Nay.
The ordinance passed second reading with one, two, three, four, five, six ayes, two nays, and one absent at the time of voting.
I would like to say something. I want protection for the settlement communities, I just, I don't think a moratorium is the way to do it, and I think that we need a overlay district or something like that, and I am concerned about that, and what, something else that bothers me is we keep talking about major subdivisions. Well, I don't know, what's a, what's a major subdivision? Is it four lots? Is it six lots? Is it 20 lots? Is it three lots? You know, I don't know what we're, I don't know what we're stopping, you know, I don't know what we're, exactly what we're doing. We're saying you can't divide, you can't subdivide any lots, or just one or two, or how many can you subdivide? Because there are people that live in those communities, and they may want to, they may want to subdivide their lots. So, anyway, that's why I can't vote for it, so thank you all. Yes, sir.
Let's see. I'm not going to prolong it, because we've been in a long meeting, but those folks can subdivide their own property. You know, we're not stopping them from subdivide their own property. Family members can subdivide their own property, they can build, you know, houses on their property, it's just not a big development coming in and buying the lot, and then, you know, extending it out to more than what it should be. As far as the moratorium, the moratorium allows them a chance to do what just we were asking for, to establish an overlay district, but until they establish an overlay district, they're being bombarded, so this actually, for 24 months, allows them to go work with our staff to develop an overlay district, to stop so much overdevelopment in these communities without any infrastructure, without any sewer anything, and so that's why, you know, we came up with this, and that's why I fully hold all this, support it, and it's not a question of, you know, which tool do we use? Staff is going to work with them, and they got up to 24 months, so we're not stopping development, we just say, in these particular communities where we're asking for help, this is what we're going to do to help them.
All right, sir, thank you. Mr. Boykin?
Just briefly, just to echo Mr. Pryor's comments, that's my basis of support on this, is that this is purpose-driven, this is not a moratorium for moratorium's sake, it's to provide planning, staff, and the community to use that time to put those protections in place so the moratorium can be removed.
Yes, sir, Mr. Moody?
I might suggest the vote's been taken, and it's 6-2, let's move it on.
I want to be able to speak.
All right, Mr. Kabrowski?
Discussion period, we should have had it then, we should move it on.
Everybody else got to speak? I just want to-
You've been speaking all night.
Well, you usually do too, and-
No, I don't, not like you.
Hey, well, I-
Hey, let's just do it.
I just want to thank each and every one of the people from the settlement communities that came out all these times, and it's a great honor to be on the board at a time when we passed this and showed respect. We heard from the Chamber of Commerce and some of the most powerful people in the county today to advocate for themselves, and I say the people from the historic settlement community are just as important and part of the community as they were, and we showed respect, and I think we did a great thing tonight by honoring and allowing these communities to control their own destiny, and again, show the respect for all the generations that brought them to this point, and I think it was Mr. Habersham who said that when somebody suggested they just be bought off and paid, it's more in just the value of their homes, it's a community that you can't replace, those bonds of family, and this is what we should be doing, showing respect for people and honoring the bonds of family to keep them together, so I'm very honored and proud that we did this tonight.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, 4A, amend county fee ordinance to implement FY25 budget, second reading?
Thank you, sir. Okay. An ordinance amending those portions of the Charleston County Code, section 2-137, dealing with fees in the radio communications department. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Okay. Amend county hazardous materials ordinance to implement FY25 budget, second reading?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending those portions of Charleston County Code, section 7.5-35, dealing with the hazardous materials fees in the emergency management department. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Dominion Energy Easement for Rosalia Complex Fuel Site, second reading?
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy, South Carolina Incorporated, on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number 411-13-00-004, located at Leeds Avenue and Headquarters Road, North Charleston, South Carolina. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt? Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody? Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Wait, you skipped me.
Did I skip you? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Okay, Dominion Energy Easement for Osalia Complex Phase 2.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy South Carolina Incorporated on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number 411130004, located at 3681 Leeds Avenue, North Charleston, South Carolina. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with eight ayes and one absent at the time of voting.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve 5A through C? Secondary.
C. Any requests to approve, they're all, any, any, any discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We still have to read them.
Yes, sir. An ordinance replacing Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordinances, Charleston County entitled Flood Damage Prevention and Protection and Other Matters Related There Too, and an ordinance approving and accepting the complete transfer of authority to conduct municipal elections for the town of Sullivan's Island to the Board of Elections and Voter Registration of Charleston County, and finally, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a special source credit agreement by and between Charleston County and Project Summertime, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates whereby Charleston County will enter into a special source credit arrangement with the company, providing for allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for development for a joint county industrial park with Colleton County and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval 6A through F and 7A. Second.
Approved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion about any one of those? Mr. Moody?
I support all these, Mr. Pryor, thank you. I did want to maybe mention to Mr. Tooten and Ms. Rona that at some point, maybe our audit committee, I, Scott &amp; Company's been fantastic, I find them very engaging, but I just wonder if we have any rules where we've got to have a different auditor look at this, be appointed every five to 10 years or something, so that a separate set of ayes is looking at the books.
I think that's a staff policy. It has to change.
We don't have to talk about it now, but I just, I would like to maybe, let's take it up, and if we need to have an audit committee meeting, we can, we can discuss it there, but this is not the forum for it, but I just wanted to mention it here.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.
On item number 8, I'm going to ask that 8B be removed until we can have a discussion in the community, not 8B, but 8P, the Acabe, project, street project?
Yes, sir.
Everything else goes except that until Mr. Darby and I have a chance to meet with the community, because we've got some calls out there about infrastructure, and we've got some calls about folks don't know what's going on, and so, I talked to Mr. Lou Ellis, he said this will not hurt anything, they'll just hold the money until we can bring it back.
And that's part of 8B?
Yes, sir, that's part of 8B.
But you were, you were-
Metanoia, Acabe Street Project.
Okay, but then you said you were good with all the others?
All the rest, yeah, I'm just asking that that be removed, and then approve everything else.
So, that's 8A through 8G with part of 8B, or just all of 8B taken out?
No, 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 no.
Other project in 8B?
See, 8B, you got, you got 1, 2, 3, 4 projects.
Right.
All right, I'm asking that item number 2-
Okay, just that one, okay. Okay. Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Moody. Any discussion?
Yeah. Ms. Smalls, those projects, I just want to make sure, the Metanoia ones, when they build using these ARPA funds, and they sell them to a qualified purchaser, the purchaser does buy the land and the house, correct?
It depends. It depends on which organization, nonprofit. If it is Metanoia, the ones that you're referring to, then it is the home, but there is one nonprofit that we have worked with, and they hold on to the land, and that's the community-
The Metanoia project only, they're selling the land with the house?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, there are some ones that do a trust that holds the land, but in that case, for the project on Acabe, and I, if y'all want to look into the infrastructure issues, I understand, but the, a homeowner that purchases one from Metanoia gets the home and the land, and they hold that title, only subject to whatever financing terms, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further, Mr. Werman?
Yeah. I think Metanoia generally doesn't do land trust stuff, because part of their mission is generational wealth building and that sort of thing, so, yeah, so we're voting on an amended 8B, is that what we're doing? We're going to move forward the other two projects, or?
We're going to move forward with everything, 1, 3, and 4, and then, we're just going to hold number 2 until, Mr. Darby, this is his district, and so he wants to have a meeting with the community.
Hold it in advance?
Yeah, we hold it in advance until we come back. The funding is still there.
That is correct, but on number 2, there are two projects there, there's the Metanoia, and then there's the Bridge North.
Well, Bridge North can move forward, I have a problem with Bridge North.
So, it's, you do, you only want to remove Metanoia?
Only, only the Acabe. Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much.
Move for approval 8 through, 8 through G, well, 8 through G, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Reverend Milton. So, we voted, we just voted on that. Comments? Reverend Milton?
Much, Mr. Chair, I know it's been a long meeting, but certainly, this is a reflective week, as mentioned in Mr. Werman's soul-stirring prayer, mentioning the commemoration of the Emmanuel Nine, and I would like to at least call the names of these individuals, I know it's been a long meeting, but certainly worthy, Reverend Clemente Carlos Pinkney, Reverend Daniel Simmons, Reverend Sharonda Coleman Singleton, Reverend DePain Middleton Doctor, Suzie Jackson, Kiwanda Sanders, Myra Thompson, Ethel Lance, Cynthia Graham Hurd, Charleston Nine, Mike Benke, William Billy Hutchinson, Louis Mulkey, James Earl Drayton, Melvin Chapman, Bradford Brad- Brandon Thompson, Mark Kelsey, and then also tomorrow, celebrating Juneteenth, which is commemorating the end of slavery in the United States, Freedom Day for black people in America, and so, wanted to at least lift those reflective events up, so that we can continue fighting toward those things that are good, virtuous, and just. Thank you.
Sir.
Just one thing, Mr. Sasse, thank you, Mr. Reverend Milton, for that good summary. I did want to recognize our friends from the San Andrews Public Service District, Ms. Holderness, who's the administrator over there, and Chairman John DiStefano, who's going to get to, get busy on our fire station, EMS station out there at Church Creek. It's been a long time coming, so thank you for being here and for your patience. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Everything we talked about a lot tonight, just wanted to thank everybody that came for the public hearings, to voice their opinion, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Werman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just echo what, what Mr., or Reverend Milton said, to remember, you know, all those lost in Mother Emanuel, the Charleston Nine as well, and, and yes, to reflect and celebrate Juneteenth tomorrow, as I know we will be doing, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing more from me.
Thank you, Mr. Pryor.
Kudos to Reverend Milton and Mr. Werman's coming.
I guess I'm following in line with everyone else. The Charleston Nine and Emmanuel Nine, I was personally involved with both of those incidents. They, it's left an indelible mark on my heart, and every, this time of year is particularly tough, two of the most sad and heartbreaking experiences I've ever had to work through, and again, thank y'all for bringing all, you know, that their memory deserves to be honored